And then I'm going to make you a co-host. Ah, here comes the chair.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Hello.
Good evening.
Long day.
And just for the record, is it Orlando?
It's YoLando, like, like.
Yo.
Why? Yeah.
Y is a Y. Okay, thank you. But for those of you who are playing at home, YoLando will be joining the planning board in March. Tony is the chair. And the rest of the committee is here. So, Madam Chair, it is after, it's 6:01, so you may call the meeting to order.
All right, first, welcome Orlando. For saying your name wrong, just correct me.
YoLando.
Yo, YoLando. Okay. All right. Calling for the planning board meeting for Tuesday, February 7th. First, I have a quick opening statement. And my understanding, our meetings will resume in April in person. So this, I will read the statement, February and March, and then April, we look forward to seeing everyone in person. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with the government order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the question and answer function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record. For those of you joining by phone, press star nine. If you want to ask a question, please raise your hand. A copy of this recording will be on the city's webpages. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure account accuracy. Okay, so roll call. Larry Hassan.
Here.
James Sweeney.
Here.
Tony Gonzalez here. So, Rob, you just want to review again, we have just three plant board members, so.
Yeah, YoLando is here for just viewing purposes. He hasn't joined the board yet. So with a three-member board, we can hear subdivisions, but we cannot hear the return to CBA and site plan approval.
Okay.
So also want to let everybody know that our April meeting is going to be. And Evan, what is the date? April?
13th.
Yes, 13th.
Thursday, April 13th.
Okay.
G A R room?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Actually looking forward to be back in person. All right, we will start with the acceptance of the last month's meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept last month's meeting. Minutes, excuse me?
Second.
Yes, thank you. Roll call Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. The agenda changes for this evening, so all this return to CBAs will be continued. So 1449 Main Street continued to next month's meeting. 48 North Pearl Street, the same. 124 Bradley Ave, the same. And 159 North Main Street continued to next month's meeting. Let's be scared YoLando away. All right, first up, we have one added A and R. Evan?
Yes, it's 46 Montello Street. It's the old De Angelos and the Dunkin' Donuts. They are just adjusting a lot line between the two parcels. And everything looks good, so no issues.
Okay. Roll call, not roll call, sorry, motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
All right, roll call Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. And we have one lot release?
Yep, two lots on Cypress Drive, Lot 1 and Lot 2. They are going well. Everything that they need to do to release those lots is good. They're still holding on to three more for the final completion of everything. But up to this point, yeah, they're fine for those two lots, one and two.
And Madam Chair, we do have a preliminary as-built that shows that the road base is in, as are the curbs. And underground utilities are in place. So we feel confident that the only thing after construction of the remaining houses will be to repave and put the top coat on, on the street.
Excellent. Okay, good, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Thank you. Moving on, street acceptance.
All right, this is pretty straightforward as well on Bud Avenue. It's right next to Brockton Hospital. They are going to accept it from a private way to a public way in one of those little neighborhoods.
Excellent. Okay, motion?
Motion to accept, street acceptance of Bud Ave.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call Larry Hassan?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Speaking of Brockton Hospital, I mean, it's terrible what happened there today. So thoughts are with them. I hear it's gonna be a lot, long road to recovery, so any support offered them, we need to reach out. Okay, so moving on to our short agenda this evening, we have two site plan approvals. The first one being 41 to 53 Arlington Street. Applicant is Steve Torrey with ET Engineering representing.
Okay. Is Jim Burke representing Mr. Torrey? I don't see Steve Torrey on here either.
McCluskey.
Oh, there's John McCluskey. I'm sorry, John. I see you there now. And you should be moving on to his panelists now. And if there's anybody else with John McCluskey, please raise your hand so we can see you.
I see Azu.
Is, is Azu here?
Yes.
Just moved him. He's coming in now.
Okay.
Azu, do you want to make the presentation?
He might still be connecting.
Yeah. What, this one's 53, Rob? Is this the Sims office? I get the addresses, but fuck. Yes, it is. Yeah, and you received the Form B?
Yes, we did. Thank you very much.
I don't think there's anything significant, other than Dewey Stone, who was certainly a significant individual. I don't think there's any real significance on the house. I mean, he lived here. Oh, no, no, we just wanted it documented before it happened. Right, right. That's all. Azu, are you available to join?
Yes, you're here. You're here. I'm here with Steve Torrey, the owner and the applicant. About the able, the able Rob May, would you be able to share your file for us?
I'm going to ask Evan, because I didn't download it, but I think she has access to it.
All right, there we go.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Evan.
You both rock, I can tell you that. The, so, thank you, Rob, and thank you, Evan, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Azwad Tanero, the engineer for the project. I have with me here Mr. Steve Torrey, and I believe Attorney McCluskey has already been introduced. He is no stranger to this great city of champions. So what we have is, what we basically have is our four-sheet plan. We had gone to a tech review, and there were certain, there were very good and cogent, insightful comments that were made to our plans about to reduce the overburdening of our plans. So we separated the two sheets into four. And so what you have here is the existing conditions, basically showing the two existing buildings and a drainage easement that traverses the property from the northwest and going southeasterly and then out to, out to Arlington Street. And the second sheet, so, and by the way, before we get there, we did some test pits. Those little poker dots that you see, four of them, that the test pits that we did to verify the location of the drainage, as well as verify the type of soils that we have in terms of our, for our drainage design. So Evan, if you'll go to sheet number two, that basically shows you the overall site layout and the proposed activities. What I will say, if you look at the structures that are highlighted, if you will, in blue, those represent the proposed units. It's a total of, a total of 14 units that we're proposing. The, what you see, bless you. What you see as orange is a proposal of a stormwater recharge system that has been designed to, to satisfy the requirements of the DEP Stormwater Management Guidelines, as well as the city's MS4 ordinance, which the city promulgated consistent with the EPA stormwater quality requirements. What you see in gray shading is the parking. We meet and satisfy the parking requirements. We have a dumpster that is proposed for trash, as a receptacle for trash pickup, and it's enclosed. Over to the left of my notes is the zoning criteria and the dimensional requirements that shows you what is required and the zoning elements. The minimum lot area requirement, the minimum frontage. If you look at the minimum area based on what we're proposing, that it required is one acre. We have another little acre, which is 43,560 square feet. The existing square footage is 47,821 square feet. The minimum frontage required is 100. We have existing as 252 plus feet. For the setbacks, the front setback of a structure is 35 feet. Existing right now is 50, and we're proposing 35, which is in conformance to the zoning. The setbacks, minimum is 20 feet. On the right side, what we, what is existing is 41.7, and we're proposing 96.4 feet. On the left side, required is 20. Existing is 39.3, and we're proposing exactly 20 feet. The rear requirement is 50. The existing is 71.7, and what we propose is 71.8. So you can see that it conforms to the dimensional requirements of the city. If you drop down below, I show the parking calculation. And the proposal parking required is 40, we're proposing 40. One of the comments that the director aptly noted is that we did not specify which of those parking spots will be handicap. And so we have identified, based on the location of the buildings, we have two parking spaces proposed for the handicap accessible. And that it will be a parking spot number 33, as well as parking spot number 40. The area that you see in green are the areas for landscaping. And the landscaping, it's, if you look at the minimum required, if we were to go back, Evan, please, to the zoning table, the minimum green space that is required is 25%. The existing is 50, and based on the proposed use, we are proposing at 34%. So that is almost our 10%, almost 10%, 9% exact above the minimum required. And so we have shown some, one of the comments that were made related to what we feature for landscaping. And I assume most of the members of the board and the city officials will ascertain the fact is, Mr. Torrey has been very, very good steward of the projects that he has developed across the city. And so he is proposing a landscaping scheme that will be commensurate with the required landscaping of the city. The lighting will be building mounted, and water and sewer will be individual services to the proposed units. And, and what we've done is hatch the water in blue color, linework, and then the sewer in green. And that is basically consistent with the city, with the state environmental code, how they like to see our utilities delineated. If you look at, if you would look at the US for traffic circulation, we propose our one-way in and one-way out. And that is very consistent with, and similar to what we did for Mr. Torrey on Warren Ave, which the city approved, and the planning board approved it. And it's all built, and I'm here to report to you that that project came out exactly the way it was proposed. And the tenants, as well as the unit, some of the unit owners are very, very satisfied with the way things are run there. And so that would be similar to what is, what would be done here. Evan, if you will go to the next sheet. Okay, so in line with what the director and, and the planning staff commented, this is a result of that, we segregated some of the information so it's a little bit easier to, to see. And so this plan here shows a little bit of the landscaping, but the next sheet will show in more detail. But you can see some of the bushes, as well as major trees that are proposed. Those are show in dark colors. And then you can see the blue line that traverses along the northerly building, and it comes down, traverses westerly, and then down southerly on the left side of the westerly unit, westerly five unit. And then you can see the sewer to the, on the green, to the right side or the east side of the westerly five unit, so that the sewer is separated from the water. And then you look at the easterly unit, you can see the green line for the sewer, and those, we have individual sewers going into those units, as well as the water. And so I, you know, I know we kick and scream when we receive comments, but these comments actually help tell the story. So again, to Rob and Evan, I gotta confess that I was kicking and complaining, but the comments actually proved that very useful in being, that way I can actually explain the plan. So I appreciate that. And what we're looking at is the drainage. We're gonna have a drainage easement proposed to properly identify the route of the drainage. The city right now has an easement, but it's what I call a prescriptive easement. There is really no document that memorializes the easement. And so what we are proposing as part of this project is to actually prepare an easement plan, as well as combining, because these are two separate parcels. So we will have, if you will, what we call an 81X plan, prepared for recording at the registry. And so, and then as well as show the easement, so that there's an actual definition of the easement for the city. And then lastly, but not the least, Evan, if you go to the next sheet, and incidentally, if you will look over to the left side of the plan, thank you, Evan. You can see, those are trees that we're proposing, as well as the bushes. You can see the buildings, the existing buildings on their project that Mr. Torrey did, and you can see that he doesn't skimp on the bushes. You can see in the foreground there, in front of the building, you can see the shrubs, and then you can see the size of the trees that he put up to balance, to balance out the buildings. So Evan, if you would go to the, I believe this is the last sheet that we have that to show, because it's, as you said, pictures tell, pictures, photos are worth a thousand words. And besides that, I think it's a great project, consistent with what's been done before on Warren Ave and what we did on Farm of Ave. And so we would entertain any comments or questions that the board may have, and we asked that the board approve the project so that we can get moving with the next level of activities that we.
Evan, by any chance, do you have the elevation drawings?
I think it's just what's on here.
Ah, okay. Just, you know, for the board certification, we do have elevation drawings. This is a neighborhood with a lot of historic fabric. 41 Arlington is a beautiful old home. Unfortunately, this property can't be saved. It's, it's deteriorated to a point that it really does make sense to bring it down. The architect that Mr., what is he working with? Tor. Is, oh, Mr. Torrey, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Steve, has done a wonderful rendering of this building, and it fits the architectural style of the neighborhood, and will be a wonderful addition to our community.
Thank you, Rob. And so have the new, the proposed drainage easement been established? And as Azu aware, it needs to be recorded before the project completion?
This is John McCluskey. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay, so yes, we have discussed it. We are going, I believe, Azu correctly from Rob, we're going to establish a separate plan for the easement, and we're going to create a document, and we'll get those reported in the registry.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the details on the landscaping. I don't have questions there. The other board members might, but for the fire access, could you provide details to Deputy Williams to see if he has questions?
I will let, Mr. Williams, I don't want to like, I don't like putting words in people's mouths, but I don't think it would receive any negative adverse comment, but the template that we use will show that with the one-way circulation that there's adequate access, but I'd like to add, add and speak to it.
Very chief.
Thank you. So I looked through the plans that were online real quick. I didn't see the fire truck plan. Do you have one, Azu?
Yeah, so what happened was the, the, it was, the plan was so busy, and then we started editing, and in an attempt to make sure that we, in an attempt to make sure that we meet the deadline, we filed the drawings, but then when I separated the sheets, that kind of, if you are familiar with how cat fires work, we create, almost like your GIS, we do them, we do them in layers, and that layer fell off the grid, and my apologies for that. But we can certainly, we'll email it to you, showing that by itself.
As long as it works, Azu, I'm good with it. If you can email it to me in the morning, that's fine.
Yeah.
I understand how things can get lost. I'm actually a trained draftsman by trade, so I understand. But as long as you, as long as you say it works, I trust you. And, you know, I miss, I know Mr. Torrey wouldn't, you know, skimp on that, so I'm good, Madam Chair.
And when you retire, now that you've let, you've let the cat out of the bag, when you retire, believe me, there will be a job for a retired firefighter that does drafting. That's, that's a dying profession.
Yeah.
Retired is retired.
Thank you for addressing his questions. What about the lighting? Can you just provide more details for that?
Yes, so Evan, if you will share that screen again.
Sheet four.
Yes, sir. Yes, so, so if you look at around the building, you will see the red, the red stars that are attached to the building, and that is exactly what we did on the other locations. So you can see the red stars on each building, one on each corner, and on the three, on the podplex, you can see where we include them. And those are designed so that they don't cast light past the parking, parking layout. So those are strategically located. And matter of fact, I would encourage anyone that wants to drive out to go by the, the other units that we included, the landscape, to show you what landscape would look like. The, that same lighting, very, very, I forgot the term that they used, but you know, it's almost like a candlelit, it's well-lit area, but it doesn't overpower the neighborhood. And that's, and that's, that's why we have it on the buildings, as opposed to pole-mounted. When you have them at pole, they hire the pole, and you know, the typical height of our utility poles is such that it's almost 125 feet up in the air. That tends to cast more lumen past the project boundaries. And so that's why we have this, the way we have them.
Okay, thank you. Open up to questions from other board members?
I don't have any questions at this point that you haven't already asked, or that he hasn't already answered. I think it's a solid plan.
I, excuse me, I don't have any other questions either, too. I've seen, I saw this at tech review, and they've come a long way with tech review. I, I know they were aggravated walking out of tech review, but as Azu said, you know, it was helpful, so. I don't have any questions either. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll open up to public comment?
Ladies and gentlemen in our audience, if you would like to make a comment or ask a question, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you move your cursor down there and hover over the bottom, the menu pops up, and you'll see the hand raised like that. You can use that or press star nine if you're on the phone. You can use that or press star nine if you're on the phone. And Madam Chair, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, so we'll move on. Is there a motion?
So we have a motion to approve with standard conditions plus the following conditions, but I think we're gonna have to edit some of them a little bit, so I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but the proposed drainage must be properly established and recorded before project completion. However, on the second area, they provided the landscaping and the lighting, but we still need fire access plans and reviewed by the planning board before the final plan is assigned. That makes sense?
Sounds right.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Ariasan?
Yes.
Name's Sweeney?
Yes.
Morning Gonzalez, yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thanks, Rob, and thanks, Evan. Have a good night.
Thank you.
On the agenda and last for this evening is a site plan approval for one thirty-seven, one forty-one, and one forty-seven Main Street. CMK Development Partners is the applicant, and J. Kane Holmgren is the representative.
Madam Chair, before this gets rolling, I just want to say that the city is really excited about this project. We have been working with the current landowner and the future landowner for, oh, there he is, Mr. Kavanaugh. I'll promote him to panelist. It has been a fantastic project. You'll see it when it comes up. It's going to be a great addition to our downtown, and I can't wait for the groundbreaking and then the ribbon cutting. So I'll stop gushing at this point and let you carry on.
All right, Scott, can you pull up your plans for us, please?
Madame Chair, and then if I could just hand it over to Attorney Burke, he can get started on the presentation, if that is okay with you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely, the seat is yours.
There are the plans, Madam Chair. Go ahead, Attorney Burke.
Thank you, and Madam Chairwoman, members of the planning board. It is absolutely my pleasure to be here representing Mr. Kavanaugh and CMK Development Partners. Jerry has been very actively involved in this project, as Rob said, for a number of months, meeting at all levels of the city to try to create a really dynamic project for what is a Vista Street in the Main Street, Brockton. Historically, a great location, and in terms of a transit-oriented project, it couldn't be cited in a better place. Basically, Madam Chairwoman, this is a application pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter forty R and the comparable ordinance from the City of Brockton as amended, in which we are seeking to be allowed to construct new dwellings, ninety-nine units, in, with an affordable twenty percent, which I believe is twenty units in this specific instance, in which we are seeking certain waivers, which I identified in my outline to the board of July twenty-one nineteen twenty-two. Hopefully, members of the board have had occasion to review it, and I won't spend a lot of time on it. But to skip, in terms of the relevant matters, the specific ordinance looks for the promotion of residential and mixed-use development, the continued development, redevelopment of downtown Brockton, the insurance of high-quality characteristics and identity of downtown in terms of architecture, diversified housing stock, and to generate positive tax revenue. This couldn't be any better in terms of hitting the nail on the head for the city. The developer has great experience in terms of mixed-use projects, who are outlined in my narrative in places such as Weymouth, New Bedford, Natick, and they've also done commercial construction for higher educational institutions in the past. They're well-qualified to handle the project, the, the plan, and, and the, the consultants that he hired are exceptional. Scott is going to do the engineering, and Kevin Patton has been designing and redesigning the project before you. And Kevin and BKA, as you know, have had their fingerprints in just about every major project that's gone on in the downtown Brockton under the transit-oriented development, you know, explosion. And Scott likewise is extremely qualified to assist the board in designing a plan that will meet the requirements of forty R. The historical significance of these structures are, they actually were part of the original Kresge Building in downtown Brockton. More recently, the Marians have occupied the property, and in fact, the Marians are the current owners under a family trust. What we're looking for is to build the ninety-nine units. We're gonna put fifty parking spaces on the structure. We went to the Brockton Parking Authority and were able to secure a commit for up to forty-nine units. And luckily, and it's somewhat different from the mold, those units are right at the site, both in the back and in the side. So when we talk about the utilization of a garage, the units that we are going to secure are right next to and adjacent to the physical site and facility. Couldn't be a better transit-oriented project. You're approximately ten minutes away from the rail line, also of the same distance from the transit station, BAT. This project is not designed for families. This project is more designed for couples and another or older, of course, their years or younger individuals. And it's geared toward those who do not primarily rely on motor vehicle for their primary work needs. It's expected and it's hoped that the majority of the residents will make use of the mass transit, which is a part of the statutory requirement that it have the facilities. Also, in terms of our needs from Brockton, we are also having a first floor with mixed use of a commercial space that Kevin will get into in far more detail than I am. We are asking for certain waivers. I outlined those waivers on my original plan and updated the waiver request with the help of BAT's suggestion, Beta, excuse me, Beta's suggestion in a November the eighth, twenty twenty-two letter. In short, we hope that this board will approve this project tonight, and if there are pending any other comments from Beta, that it would be approved so that we will comply with any other minor issues that are raised. I think first, we probably want to hear from Scott, because there is some major site work in there, and I'd appreciate it if he would take over.
Thank you, Attorney Burke. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Scott Faria, Holmgren Engineering. As Attorney Burke said, in, in Plana May, said a pretty exciting project for us. We've been talking about this site for at least five years and probably longer throughout city, city hall. So what we have is the three existing plots that make up the Marians' property, the two existing plots that have buildings on them, and then the third vacant lot closest to West Elm Street. Our proposed plan pretty much covers the entirety of those three lots. There isn't a heck of a lot left over. Our main entrance to the building will be off of Main Street, the main pedestrian entrance. Our parking entrance will be off of L Street. Frederick Douglass is a one-way road off of Main Street. You would end up having to loop all the way down to Warren Ave, come down L Street, which is also a one-way street, and enter our garage here off of L Street. As Attorney Burke said, we have fifty parking spaces within our parking garage. The access would be, as I said, right here off of L Street, fifty spaces, the other forty-nine are off-site. All of the utilities are available. We have our proposed water coming off of Main Street. Our proposed, I'm just gonna flip the page, so I can show you our proposed water coming off of Main Street. Our proposed sewer tying into existing sewer on L Street, and our proposed drainage system will overflow into the municipal drainage system in L Street. As we mentioned in just about all of these projects, the existing properties, certainly on, on Main Street, all of these commercial properties essentially have no onsite drainage and aren't in compliance with the DEP stormwater guidelines in the City of Brockton stormwater guidelines. By doing this project, it gives us the opportunity to bring the property into conformance with those guidelines. Because of that, we have this large drainage system proposed in the middle of the, of the lot area underneath the parking garage, and that will handle the runoff from the open space and also from the rooftop. So the rooftop, the open space for the surface parking, all of that, that rainfall will be handled within this drainage system, again, in compliance with all those guidelines. That's, that's really, well, I'll just quickly go, we had our second review from Beta, Madam Chair. They had a couple of items that they wanted us to address, that I did address. Those are on the plans that we submitted to the board and that I'm showing you right now, really minor issues. They wanted to add a catch basin right up here near L Street that I'm showing, and increase the overflow from a six-inch pipe to an eight-inch pipe. That's essentially the, the last remaining couple of points that Beta had. We made those changes. We're confident, we've talked to Beta and their review engineer on this project, Gary James about it. He's comfortable with what we've done. So we, we feel pretty good about being in compliance with all their regulations. So having said all that, Madam Chair, I'm guessing nobody really cares all that much about my plans, and they'd be much more excited about Kevin Patton's plan, so with that, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. And if you're okay with it, Madam Chair, I'd like to let Kevin take over, and he can spend a couple of minutes showing you his plans.
Just one, one second, Scott. You said the first comment from Beta was the catch basins. What was the second?
The second comment. Second comment was the overflow line, the drainage line. I had previously shown a six-inch overflow. They wanted to increase it to an eight-inch overflow. So that's this line right here that goes out from my drainage system out to L Street.
Okay, thank you. And you're passing the seat to who?
Pass the baton to Kevin Patton from BKA.
Yeah, Kevin Patton, I am the project architect, and I'm going to attempt to share my screen. All right, so this is a rendering of the proposed project. The program is ninety-nine residential units. It is four stories of residential over one story of ground floor, retail and parking. And this is a view of the building where we have Main Street down at the bottom of the sheet, L Street extension on the right side, and then you can kind of see the neighborworks building peeking around the corner over here. So off of Main Street, we have a pedestrian resident access near the middle of the building. And to the right of that is the retail cafe space. To the left of the residential access is amenity space for the residents. It also has its own entrance off of Main Street. The building materials are fiber cement. We're using a blended color for the primary material that's supposed to pick up the hues of the brick on Main Street, and then using a dark gray fiber cement to, to highlight some accent points on the building. The ground floor is mostly glass with a, with a black aluminum frame, and then we have a dark color, dark gray to black brick working into some key points along the storefront. We're also proposing to do some hardscape and landscaping along Main Street, where we're coming in and out, highlighting the, the building entrances with some pavers and things like that. At the top corner here, you might notice on the fifth floor that we pushed the wall in to create a balcony space. That's access from an amenity fitness room that's up here. And then to reinforce that, we changed the window pattern below it to these large large, single, fixed, fixed pane glazed windows for those, for that area. Those of you who might have picked up a little bit of articulation, the windows over here, they are Juliet balconies that are part of the program. And then back here, we have the, the parking area. This is the ground floor, floor plan for orientation purposes. Main Street's on the right side of the sheet. L Street's on the far left, and L Street extensions out across the top of the page. Here, we can see the resident access to the resident lobby with mail, elevator, stairs. Just above that is about twenty-one hundred square feet of commercial cafe space. This is not programmed yet. It's just a placeholder for, for whoever might be interested in leasing that. Also, off of the lobby, there is an amenity space that is currently programmed for like a coffee bar lounge, open collaborative business center, meeting spaces, a leasing office, and there's some utility space down here, too. So also, access from the lobby at Main Street elevation is adored out to the parking field where we have fifty parking spaces. We have our trash area up here in the upper left-hand corner, which is access from L Street with roll-out bins. We have a couple other utility rooms in strategic locations. We have space potentially for locked bicycle storage along this area. And we have room for a U-Haul moving box truck of sort to pull in and then easy access to a second elevator and stair so that we don't tie up the primary elevator on move-in, move-out days. The residential floor plates all stack for floors two through four with approximately twenty-five units per floor. There are a mixture of studios of about four hundred and fifty square feet on average, one bedrooms at seven hundred and fifty square feet on average, and then we have four, two bedroom units on each floor that are just a little over a thousand square feet. They're all accessed off of a very typical double-loaded corridor running down the spine of the building. The top floor has one less unit. That's how we end up with ninety-nine units. And the only difference is the upper corner where we have a fitness center and exterior balcony overlooking Main Street. All right, so I included this sheet because it's important to understand the restrictions of the site. Accessing the parking field from L Street on the lower right-hand corner of this drawing. This is a section, cross-section through the building, and you can notice that L Street is significantly higher than Main Street. There's quite a bit of elevation change. About five and a half feet approximately. So we will be parking along the slope for the parking field, and this allows us to enter Main Street, go through the lobby, and enter the parking field without a vertical transition of stairs or an elevator, as well as going from the parking field out to Main Street and making full use of both vertical circulation cores in the building with the elevator and the main lobby, as well as the one that's located approximately here on the parking field. Also notice in the upper corner here, the, that fitness center and balcony space. And this is the last view of the building in evening rendering that highlights the building architectural lighting. We highlighted this corner with these up-down lights to accentuate these pilasters. We have under-overhang lighting that's along Main Street here to highlight and illuminate. highlight and illuminate the uh building entrances and sidewalk along Main Street. There would be lighting up in the uh ceiling area of the balcony. And then we have this really interesting new light that's out on the market that it sits in the jam of the window and it just illuminates the jam of the window. So we're highlighting these large windows uh in the evening, um and it should be pretty spectacular, I think. And then we have the um, the garage parking lot lighting that you see in the back here with this glowing area. And that's my, my last sheet, so I'm wrapped up here and, and I can take any questions that you might have.
It's a very sharp-looking building and I think the presentation is spectacular. I actually um think the location is fabulous as well, and that was Attorney Burke's first words out of his mouth. So I'm excited to see this project get underway. Um, Mr. May, the two outstanding comments that um Scott addressed, were there any others that you're aware of?
Um, no, Madam Chair, I believe those were the two outstanding, and I think that he will be able to um address those rather quickly. Um and uh conditional uh approval should be uh more than appropriate. I do want to say, uh, we have been at this project for almost over a year, I'm sure. And I feel like a proud Papa. I can't, I can only imagine what the developer Jerry Kavanaugh um feels about it, and he is here if you would like to uh address the group. Um, some of you may remember Jerry. He was the chief of staff for Senator Kennedy um in Washington, and he's come back to do a lot of development in southeast Mass. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Well, thank, thank you very mu- much, uh Madam Chairperson and Rob. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to work in Brockton and invest in Brockton. There's an enormous transformation taking place and uh we're thrilled to be a part of it. I uh, I was lucky enough to get a team of Jim, Scott and Kevin who uh eminently qualified to do this project for me. So we would hope with this approval and others that the, we will be in the ground in two thousand and twenty-three. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, one other question for Scott before I turn it over to the other board members. Are you aware that the Park and Authority must be, I guess, recorded with the Registry of Deeds? Before this, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, questions from other board members?
I've got a, a question and I think I know the answer to it. The sidewalk on that plan is congruent with what's in front of the uh Sycamore Building, it looks like. Am I correct on saying that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Other than that, I think you guys smacked it out of the ballpark, so great job.
Yeah, I, I concur. It, it's a fabulous plan, and I know they've been working on this a long time and um just the, the exterior detail on that is gonna look unbelievable in the nighttime and daytime, so I don't, I don't have any questions here. Um, I really don't, so I'm, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, the, uh, if I could, one last thing. The lighting scheme is unbelievable with the, the the lights recessed into the window frame and the side lighting. Uh, you know, again, kudos to you guys on your plan and uh look forward to seeing it get started.
Uh Madam Chairwoman, if I could have just one last comment, uh section twenty-seven uh one hundred of our ordinance requires a finding from the board uh that the applicant has met the required fees and information in the applicable regulations which we have. The proposed development is prescribed meets all the requirements and standards of the article, design standards or waiver has been granted and we've requested specific waivers. And last, that extraordinary potential adverse impacts on the project on neighboring properties have been adequately mitigated. There will not be any impacts on the surrounding property. And uh I thank you. I thank you for allowing us to make the presentation.
All right, thank you. Uh Rob, Mr. May, open up to public comment.
Ladies and gentlemen, those of you who would like to make public comment, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen. If you are calling in, please use star nine uh to indicate that you would like to ask question. And Madam Chair, I do not have any uh audience attendee questions.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Madam Chair, excuse me, I have a question. Uh we um uh, well, I'm gonna go ahead and approve this with uh standard conditions plus the following conditions and necessary waivers, but I believe they've addressed the first one again, so I'm gonna ask for an edit on that. It's just final approval and then the temporary construction easement from the Park Authority. Um, do we need to have that in there, Rob? I just wanted to.
Um, I don't think it needs to be
Yeah.
a part of the approval, but they needed to get a building permit, so.
Obviously, and they know that, I'm sure.
Yes, they do.
What about the waivers?
Uh, we do, we would want to approve with standard conditions and approve the waivers
All right.
uh applied for.
All right, so the applicant is requesting waivers from the following table of residential dens- density allowances, section twenty-seven ninety-four-one, minimum lot area per dwelling unit. Parking section twenty-seven dash ninety-six uh one, minimum parking requirement. Front setback design standard eight point seven, rear setback design standard eight point seven. And open space roof setback and site set, side setback design standard eight point seven. I think I got it all.
Yes, you did, sir.
If that's a motion, I'll second that.
Promotion.
All in favor, Larry Sun?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Ronnie Gonzalez, yes.
We thank the board for its time.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Good luck.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, there are, anything else for the agenda? If not, we will take a motion to.
I do want to just remind the board and uh those of you watching that our um April meeting will be Thursday, the thirteenth. Um, uh which is an unusual date for us, but uh it's important. And we will be welcoming our next board member, Yolando on uh the, at the October meeting. Excuse me, the March meeting.
March seventh, correct?
April, oh, March seventh.
March seventh is the next, but April thirteenth is on a Thursday for the April.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Next month is the um collections for chairperson again that we have to do annually just to keep that in the back of your mind.
Excuse me, is there anything else we need to come in to sign for?
Do you need anything signed?
Rob, on the table now.
Isaiah.
You guys had everything signed.
So we're good for now.
You guys are all set for now.
Okay, just let us know.
There was a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, Larry Sun?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Ronnie Gonzalez, yes.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Nice to meet y'all today, you know.